Good morning and welcome to the July 8, 2020 Board of County Commissioners meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. This morning, staff are still social distancing. Commissioners have plexiglass barriers dividing them, and we also have a few folks here in the room still wearing their masks, all to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. We are streaming this morning's meeting live on KPTC Channel 8, also on the county's Facebook and YouTube platforms. This morning, commissioners, I would like to walk everyone through the business reporter, the sick reporting form for businesses. So it's very easy, very simple. It's a weekly form that we are asking businesses to voluntarily submit. Very easy to find. So you'll go to our website, sedgewickcounty.org, and just below the banner, we have our recovery and reopening businesses. We'll click on that, and there is a form here called the daily sick reporting form for businesses. This form will help allow the Health Department to track trends in diseases such as COVID-19 within our community. We are asking for businesses to submit this information to help us monitor these diseases. We have a similar form for schools in the school district or during the school year to help us track what's going on, trends and illnesses in our community from the school system. It's a very great way for our Health Department to get a picture of what's going on in our community. And so with that, we have the online form for reporting, and organizations can submit. It's very minimal data. We'll pretend that, I think Lindsey Pau Rousseau, the CFO, she had an enterprise that we'll say that I work for. And add the address. North Main in Wichita. And then add the ZIP code, 67202. The contact name of the person reporting the data is me. The phone number. And my email address. And then the reporting information that we're asking for. So if there are multiple locations and you would like to submit information on all of the facilities that your business owns, you can submit yes and just list the number of locations reporting. Or if you only have one location, just click no. The date employees were usually sick or were sick. We're asking people to submit information on a weekly basis, so we've identified Thursdays to identify that day. So we'll pretend it's tomorrow. Let's say we have just one person who was out sick that day, and then we're asking for the number of employees who were there, which does not include vacations, jury duty, bereavement leave, or anything like that planned leave. So we'll say we have maybe, you know, 13 people in the office. Then you select "I'm not a robot," and then all of the parts of traffic lights. I hope that's it. And then submit your form. So it's very simple. Takes, you know, what, 30 seconds to do, as long as you have that information. We're asking for this information to be provided weekly so we can establish a baseline and then start monitoring the trends within our community. All of this information will be reported in aggregate form on the county's dashboard once we get that information in and start analyzing. So that is what we have for this morning to present to you. Are there any questions that either I can answer or Adrian Byrne?
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. So this is anybody who is ill. It doesn't, you're not specifying what illness they have. You just want to know if anybody is sick in the organization.
Correct.
Okay. And then how do we plan to, I mean, because this is the first that I'm hearing about this. So how do we plan to communicate that? Are we speaking to the chamber? Are they sending out an email? Are we, I mean, how are we getting this out to businesses?
Absolutely. So Adrian has talked about it briefly previously. Tom did mention it with the Chamber and the Partnership and a number of other business entities. And then we're also marketing in it just via social media on the county's platform and all the other platforms that we're able to market it on.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. No, that was my exact same question from Commissioner Cruz, was making sure that the Chamber was on board with this and disseminating it to the membership, WEBA, the NFIB, and the Partnership, as long as that's happening, I think we'd be in good shape. But there's no way for us to do it unless we need to send it out to all of our email contacts as well, put it on our personal Facebook pages and our Sedgwick County Facebook pages as well, I assume would be a great way to do it as well.
Come here, sure, to both of your questions. I'm part of the COVID Task Force, which meets every Tuesday via virtual meeting. And I've mentioned that to them, it's optional, of course, businesses do not have to do it. And it's just another little bit of a data point we can gather to determine the, how much the virus is permeating the community. And to your point, Commissioner Cruz, it is not COVID-specific as any illness for the businesses. So we've talked with them. They like the idea, but it's optional for businesses. They don't have to partake, so.
Thank you, Tom. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, what do we do with the data when we get it? Because it's voluntary, and we've got thousands of different organizations that could be reporting, and I don't know how large a sample that we're going to get. So I want to make sure whatever we get back, we have valid data that we would make any kind of decisions on.
Good morning, Commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Byrne, Health Director. So we're going to compile all of the data that we receive, and then there's going to be a report created. It's going to be aggregate data so that no one business is called out. And it's similar to the school surveillance that we have, the school surveillance system where certain schools' nurses volunteer to go in weekly and put the number of children that are ill. And then we look for increasing trends to show us that there's something going on in the community. So it's just one other piece of information that we thought that we would collect, and you know, we believe it'll be like the school system where it does give us an indication of when something in the world is going on. And oftentimes, it helps us with flu, that we'll see that there's increased respiratory illnesses. So it will assist with that. And when we know whether it's flu or a virus or COVID, no. But this will help us get a baseline of where we are in the community currently, and then we'll send a report to all of the entities that participate.
Yeah, well, I understand. Schools are a little bit different because I can see them reporting any time that something is going on. Businesses with it being voluntary, let's just take, for example, we've got 10,000 businesses in Sedgwick County, and we have 500 of them make a report to us. How accurate is that data for us to make decisions on?
Well, it's enough of a snapshot, and it's just one more indicator, one piece of information. We may only have, on any given year, 15% of the schools that participate in the reporting, since one nurse can have multiple schools and can be very busy. So it just gives us a snapshot, and it does, even though it may just be, you know, 5%, 10%, 15%, it still is, can be indicative of what's going on in the community, just like when we monitor, as we monitor the emergency rooms for upticks in respiratory illnesses as well.
Very good. Well, I look forward to seeing what kind of data we get out of it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I would just add one comment to that, Commissioner. Let's not overplay the data. I mean, our job is to give you all the data we can on many facets, and no one single point of data drives policy. You guys will look at them comprehensively. If this is just a single point of data, if we get good participation and you have 100,000 workers represented in aggregate and 30% of them are sick, I think that gives you an indication that either flu or COVID is in full-fledged out there. So it's just another single point of data for you guys to use as you seek it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And then on the agenda, we have three items related to advisory boards. You'll consider a grant award from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment to support the Health Department's COVID-19 response. And then there's the discussion of the CARES Act, and we'll have a report of the Board of Bids and Contracts. So Chairman, I'll hand the meeting to you.
Okay. Thank you, Kate. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners. Today, Wednesday, July 8. We will call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
In vacation, to be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, you've received a copy of all of the emails under the public agenda that we've received. We do not have anybody signed up to speak, to address us individually this morning. So if there's any of the emails, there was quite a few in there. Anybody want to point any of them out or bring it to attention or make any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to receive and file.
So am I.
Second. Motion to receive and file the public agenda comments, which will be posted on our website. Correct? Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please. Madam Clerk.
Appointments. Item A, accept the resignation of Donald E. Gragg from the position of trustee for the Sedgwick County Minnehaw Township Board.
Mike Papun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papun, County Counselor. When I came to the county in 1984, Mr. Gragg was the chairman of the county commission. He has spent a long career in public service, most recently as a trustee for the Minnehaw Township. As you can see in your backup, due to personal reasons, Mr. Gragg is no longer able to serve in that position. This is an appointment that will be made by the county commission to replace him, but at this time, we'll accept the appointment or resignation of Mr. Gragg.
Commissioner Howell.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to clarify one minor correction to the agenda. It does say that Minnehaw is in District 1, and that is true. It's 2/3 in District 1, but 1/3 in District 5. So I'd like to work with Commissioner Meitzner on ensuring that we appoint, I guess, the best person for this position once this is vacant. So with that, I do support the resignation of Don Gragg and appreciate his good service to the county and to the township.
Thank you. Good comments, and I agree. And I've had a chance to visit with the person that's filed for that position, so I'll catch up with you.
Thank you.
And we move quickly on that, I believe. Okay, thank you. And I'd like to thank Don Gragg and his wife, as you said, Mike, longtime service. He's kind of a legend in the township business and other stuff. So thank you, Don, for your service, and I'll make a motion to accept his resignation.
Second.
To be a motion in a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item B, resolution appointing Linda Wiley as member to the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Mike Papun.
Commissioners, Mike Papun, County Counselor again. The Animal Control, Animal Care Advisory Board is a 10-member board. Each county commissioner gets two appointments to this board. This is one of Commissioner O'Donnell's appointments. He is recommending the appointment of Linda Wiley to this board. Linda replaces Kent Thomas, whose term expired recently and is, my understanding, no longer wants to serve on the board. So we have a resolution in proper form, and ask that you appoint Linda Wiley to this board.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I look forward to having Ms. Wiley as part of the Animal Care Advisory Board. She currently serves as the Salem Township Treasurer, and that term is ending as she is not running for reelection at the end of the year and expressed her support and love for animals. And I think this is just a perfect position for her. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that I appreciate Ms. Wiley standing up to continue to serve our community, and I move that we adopt the resolution of appointing Linda Wiley as a member of the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board.
I'll second that. I mean, motion in a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, resolution reappointing Mark Orr to the Sedgwick County Community Corrections Advisory Board.
Mike Papun.
Again, Mr. Commissioners, Mike Papun, County Counselor. A week ago, yesterday, we, in staff meeting, Linda Martins came and presented a couple of candidates to the board for consideration for this appointment. This would be a reappointment of Mr. Orr, which was her recommendation at this time, with no objection from the Board of County Commissioners during that staff meeting. The Community Corrections Board is a 13-member board. Four of those appointments are at-large appointments by the Board of County Commissioners. They work very closely in developing the comprehensive plan for this, for community corrections and have served an important role, and we'd ask you to reappoint, adopt the resolution reappointing Mr. Orr to this board.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Without any objection, I endorse this, and I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Orr to the at-large position.
Second.
I mean, motion in a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business. Item D, consideration of a grant award agreement with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment in the amount of $101,789 for supplemental funding to assist with the COVID-19 pandemic preparedness and response activities through the Sedgwick County Health Department.
Good morning, Commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Byrne, Health Director. So I'm presenting for your consideration a grant award that is a supplemental funding from Kansas, from our state health department, and it is a federal pass-through. It's part of the Coronavirus Preparedness and Response Supplemental Appropriations Act, and specifically for health departments to provide support for pandemic preparedness and response activities in the amount of $101,789. And what we would primarily like to do with this funding is to hire two temporary full-time positions, and we are able to use this funding through, from January 2020 through February of '21. And the two full-time temporary positions, one would be a respiratory protection specialist, and that the primary function of that position would be with the training people and helping with the N95 fit testing, because I think there are a lot of people that aren't aware that in order for the N95 respirator mask that's worn by medical providers and our first responders, and our first responders aren't aware of this, that you need to be fit-tested to make sure that there's an adequate seal around your face with it, and there's a variety of movements that you do when you're connected to this machine to make sure that there's not air escaping. And not everybody passes, but we've had quite a demand for people wanting to get fit-tested, and we don't have a dedicated position. We have a machine that we use to fit-test particular staff at the Health Department that might be involved with a response, but don't have a position dedicated. So because we've gotten so many responses, and we wouldn't be able to fit-test everyone, so part of what we would be doing is developing protocols for this and then testing others so that they can borrow the machine that we have and get their staff fit-tested that need to use a respirator mask. Ordinarily, we get fit-tested every year, but during a pandemic, if you have been fit-tested and you passed at one year, then you can skip the following year. So, but there are a lot of people that need that initial fit-testing. And then the other position would be to help with planning. And we do have a planner, but there's a lot of planning to do, and this person would help with managed forms and tracking all the work that people, staff are doing. So with that, I recommend that you approve the grant award, authorize the acceptance of the grant, authorize the chairman to sign all necessary documents, including authorizing establishment of budget authority until the conclusion of the grant term and allowing for remaining balance at the end of each calendar year to be established in the next fiscal year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions from the commission? I don't believe so. I know you briefed us all, and thank you, Adrian. And so with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I mean, motion in a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner.
Next item, please.
Item E, discussion of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tom Stills, County Manager. This is our weekly CARES update to you all. And as usual, Lindsey will carry most of the water. I just want to give you a preface of what we're going to be covering. There's five different components to the CARES item today. The first thing Lindsey will talk about is the spending plan that you all had a chance to review last week, and we will ask for a vote on that today to continue the process moving forward. The second item, she will talk about our opportunities for advocacy and some rules and regulations of what we cannot use CARES money for. That is a receive and file portion. She will also give you her weekly CARES spending update, which is also a receive and file. The fourth item is a, Mr. Stamper, I believe, will get up from legal and talk about the resolution to accept CARES state money, the $9 million we've been talking about. That will require a vote from you all to accept. And then the fifth item is some procurement issues, one from Tim Kaufman regarding some additional Health Department positions, and one from Tanya Cole regarding some communications money. You can handle that. We will need a vote there. You can do them both together, or you can do them individually. Your choice, Chairman. So with that, Lindsey, we'll get started.
Okay. And thank you, Tom, for outlining the next, these are five items in this deal. So thank you. Kate, Lindsey, you're welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsey Pau Rousseau, your CFO. I'm not going to spend quite as much time this week on your first item on the spending plan, because I think hopefully by now you've had an opportunity to review. I've talked with a few of you about some of these allocations, and my sense has been that because this is relatively fluid, recognizing that needs change even in the last few weeks, we've seen increases in COVID, that for a general high-level program, this is generally okay to proceed with. But I also recognize that there may be things that we need to talk through in a public way to give folks some reassurance about what programs are out there and what we're working on. So I will briefly cover the topics on the county side. I'll delve into more detail on those items that might be available to the public, and then I would love to hear some discussion or any tweaks that you would like to make to that. And we will also talk through what our process would be going forward to make some adjustments to this, if that's okay with you all. So with that, we'll get started. Later today, you will hear discussion about a second pot of funding that we expect to receive from the state, about 9.3 million. We also have, of course, our 99.6 million that we were allocated directly. And so this spending plan encompasses both of those totals. And the only adjustment that I have made to the plan from what you saw last week is that I have shifted that amount of the state dollars from the middle of the package for environmental down here to the bottom. Literally, that is the only change from last week, other than updating the dates. So for Sedgwick County, based on the organizational needs assessment that was done, and we talked about three or four weeks ago, we know that there are significant needs across our organization, not just for testing, but counties have been at the front line of trying to respond to the pandemic. It is where emergency management lives. It is where the county's Health Department lives. We do have a number of safety net services. And so because of that, we have seen a greater demand, and so we have allocated about $35 million to support county operations. That includes the additional positions that you've heard discussion about. It includes the court discussion. It includes personal protective equipment and cleaning and sanitizing services. It includes a number of things. And then, of course, we know and have heard from many places how important testing is. And so another $25 million has been allocated within this plan to try and provide widespread testing throughout the course of the pandemic and the remaining use of our CARES funding for that timeline. So we are in the midst, I know, of the Health Department working with various collaborators to try and determine what the most effective way is to do that testing, and I expect that there will be lots more discussion about this single greatest allocation of funding in this entire spending plan. It's roughly 25% of the county's portion of funding, and the intent, again, is to try and return kids to school and try and keep workplaces open. And the best way to do that is through, hopefully, rapid, high-volume testing. And so that is what your staff are working toward. So that is a high-level review of how the county intends to spend its allocation. Any questions I can answer on this before we move to the public entities?
No. Move on. Oh, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. Lindsey, with that 9.3 million, I was talking to an individual with the Kansas Restaurant Hospitality Association today, and they, this morning, and it's a constituent of mine, but she's also the chairwoman of the PAC, and they met with the governor yesterday, and talking about how we can, how the governor and Topeka legislators could help small restaurants and independent, you know, hospitality groups. The governor suggested that they dip into that 9.3 million. So what I would like to do is maybe get a group of people that are from the Restaurant Hospitality Association and talk about that, because they have their issues with PPE equipment. So people coming into the restaurant, do they provide them with masks? What's that cost? They don't want to charge it. But I think everybody can agree, having restaurants, in fact, I heard Commissioner Meitzner on the radio talking about that just yesterday morning, that that's such a vital part of our economy, that I would like to get a group of a few people from that industry together to talk about this, to how can we stabilize and make sure that they're clean, safe, staying out of having any type of cluster, but also seeing how we can prop them up with some of that money. And not, I mean, loans would be part of it, like the governor did immediately back in March, but I think overall, the question is the PPE equipment and the cleanliness of the restaurant. So if that's something that I don't know if the manager would want to help me organize, but get in a group together from the Restaurant Hospitality Association.
Commissioner, could you forward me her information?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Sure. And so I'll jump to that portion of this discussion. I think one of the things we wanted to talk about was process on that specifically today. So that notice, the funding opportunity that we put out wasn't necessarily aimed at business.
Right.
It was aimed at different areas. So we did get a number of responses back, including one from the Restaurant Association. And what I think we would like to do to try and do a deeper dive and understand what those needs are, is to put together a survey and work with some of our community partners to put it out there and say, what are the needs? What are your highest priorities? And then come back and try and develop a customized plan. But certainly, that safe reopening business support for now is allocated at 6 million.
Okay. Yeah. And I'm great with that and going out. The problem is sometimes that takes a month or two months, where if people, if patrons are going into restaurants today and tomorrow and over the weekend, making sure that they're safe and that the restaurants are providing the mask, and I know we're buying a lot today. So those are the type of questions that might need answered immediately, and overall, spending it is a longer term, but more just getting masks and gloves out to the community is probably a top priority, I would think, for the commission. So anyway, I'll pass the information off to Tom, and we can go from there. But since the governor had mentioned that specifically to their group yesterday, I just wanted to get that out while we were talking about it. So thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You bet. Thank you. Okay, Lindsey.
Okay. So we'll move down to the second portion of the spending plan then. And so what we heard back from cities in our county was that there was a lot of need, much of it tied to PPE, much of it tied to personnel, and so this program would seek to fund that fully at 10.1 million. The proposed methodology for this, recognizing that many of them have already borne quite a bit of cost, would be to distribute 50% of this on the front end to each of these [inaudible]. a bit of cost, would be to distribute 50% of this on the front end to each of these cities, and then seek documentation following up and having a verification process for that, and then not making any of the additional funding available, the additional 50% allocation available, until after that had been fully reconciled, and additional funding would then be available to come in on a reimbursement basis. The next item, for public health, we know that there are, through the notice of funding opportunities, a number of entities out in the area that require additional assistance to either help adapt their services to a remote way of delivering them, or to provide PPE or protective measures for their staff and their clients. And so we have allocated about 6.5 million for that. We also, within that, have designated specific funding for senior assisted living and skilled nursing care, because that is where we have tended to see the highest amount of COVID cases in the last several months. And so this would try and direct funding there to try and assist with that. Social service providers would be the next category at about $7 million. We've certainly had a lot of discussion about mental health services and what are needed there. And so though it is broken out with only a million for mental health, there is another 6 million for vulnerable populations. And certainly, mental health needs would be something I could see easily being a part of a vulnerable population discussion. And so those, though those funds are separated here, that total pot of $7 million would be flexible, and certainly, we would be able to tailor this spending plan as we start to see what level of reimbursement requests are coming in. Next is educational institutions. What we have heard lately is this push, right, to return students to schools in the fall, not necessarily to do distance learning. And the bulk of the funding request that we received back from educational institutions was to do distance learning. This is one area where there would be a gap between what we're providing and what we received back in the notice of funding opportunity. But the intention here would be to try and give schools funding to do protective measures for their teachers and their students. There are certainly many ideas that are floating around out there about how to do that. And so certainly, it would be up to the school district to come and say, here's what we think we need, and then we can partner with them to try and provide some funding to that end. We do know, though, that there is a big push to do testing. And so again, I want to reiterate that that $25 million that's allocated up under the counting would be to provide testing associated with what schools need in order to return to school safely. The next category is the reserve. And so right now, this is allocated at $10 million, just simply held back because we don't know what the future holds. And we know that this money needs to last us another five and a half months. And as we go through this process, of course, as we start to see that maybe there's a greater need somewhere else, or we don't need to hold this much back in reserve, we will come back to the commission and seek changes to the spending plan to reallocate some of that funding elsewhere. We also know that the notice of funding opportunity wasn't necessarily comprehensive. We don't necessarily know what every need is in our community. And so we have $2 million set aside that would be ready to be allocated to one of these areas or any other area that comes to light in the next several months. And then, of course, finally, as we already discussed, there's the economic revitalization portion. Because we are receiving the 9.3 million from the state, and it is tied to the unemployment impact, we do think that probably the best use of this funding then would be to try and invest that in our business community, to try and address the unemployment. And so again, that notice of funding opportunity wasn't necessarily tied to business, so we don't necessarily have the best data to know exactly what the needs are. And so we'd like to reach out to partners, again, to help us get in touch with that business community, the small businesses, and understand what needs there are, so that we can come back to you with a more tailor-made program for this. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the spending plan itself. If you don't have any, I'll move on to the next portion, which is process.
Well, thank you, Lindsay. Commissioner Howell has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, you may have answered this last week, and I apologize for not remembering the exact answer, but our school districts, of course, don't follow county boundaries. We have school districts that span our county borders, and so do those districts have the opportunity to access these funds equally, even though some of that money may flow outside Central County in terms of who it benefits?
So what we've heard from the state is generally that the county where that school district is headquartered would have responsibility for funding for that school district. And so my understanding is, if there is a headquarter that's maybe located outside of Central County, the county that's receiving that direct aid from the state would be the one that would be responsible to fund those.
Okay. And do we know, I know that 259 has about 50,000 students, and do we know how many school districts, how many students, how many schools are potentially?
I don't know how many are headquartered here. I believe when I looked, it was 15 to 17, but let me do some research and follow up with you on that.
I'm just wondering if that's even-
87,000 kids, I think.
Is that the right number? Okay. I'm just wondering if that's the right number for that part of this. I think that, it sounds like it may be a little low to me, but I'm just, I have no way to judge that. It just seems like it probably isn't enough money there, but-
Well, it is definitely a low number, and it is definitely lower than what we heard from schools. In the notice of funding opportunity, we did hear back about $29 million worth of requests for school districts. A lot of that was because of distance learning, but not all of it was. And so unfortunately, as we tried to push that funding to testing, because much of that request was distance learning, we thought that that testing would help balance it out because it would help those schools operate more safely.
All right. Thank you. That's all my questions. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Lindsay and Tom came and talked to me earlier this week because I'd expressed some concerns at the last meeting on the amount that was going to education and also behavioral health. And first of all, as far as education goes, we may need to put more money in that as we start opening up schools, and we recognize that all the numbers in here are flexible as we move through this. Remember, this entire thing started just about three months ago, and things changed by the hour. So I'm very comfortable with where we're at, and in addition, our educational institutions are getting some additional money through KSDE and through the state to help them through. What we need to do is be able to shore up the balance that they can't get, so that we can get schools open in the fall and get students and teachers back in the classroom. So after the discussions that I had earlier this week on Monday with Tom and Lindsay, I'm comfortable with where we're at. But we must recognize the fact that we may have to make some adjustments to this. This is a plan, and, you know, all good plans work up until you face the enemy. So we may have to make some adjustments. Thank you.
Okay. Now, seeing other comments, I think this is, now we need to take formal action on adopting this.
We certainly can. I do have just a couple of points I want to make on process associated with the spending plan, if I can, maybe before we move off this item, if that's okay. I apologize. So we do expect to have a grant application portal that will be stood up and linked through our Sedgwick County website. We had hoped to have that up and running by Monday. I think at this point, we still have some training needs that we're trying to work through, and so the plan that we would like to roll with is maybe to try and do a demo of that portal with you all next Wednesday at the meeting, and then get it rolled out, hopefully, quickly, but no later than Monday, the 20th. That does keep us in line with the original timeline that had been put out. And so though it's a little bit longer than we would like, we also want to make sure we do this right. And so we would use Tanya's team that she's working with on the communications for COVID. Certainly, we are already working with our internal communications team to try and put together a strategy, try to do some videos about, you know, what a potential applicant may expect through the process. Again, as we talked about early in this process, unfortunately, because it's federal money, it does come with strings. And so whatever we are subject to, everyone else down the line is also subject to. And so we want to make sure that people understand what they're committing to when this happens. The guidance has changed, I think, five or six times. We got three new pieces of guidance just last week. Reporting requirements now say we have to have this information available and be prepared for audit for up to five years after the conclusion of this funding. I also had told you before that we had to have all the money out the door by December 30th. That guidance has now changed, and we can now basically have a contract or a service commitment in place by December 30th. But we have up to 90 days after that to actually receive the invoice and make the payment. And so as we continue to get this updated guidance, we know that we will have to pass that along to, and be flexible, to the subrecipients who are also receiving this funding. So we are working diligently to get ourselves trained and to put together training for those subrecipients, again, so they know exactly what they're walking into by virtue of receiving this funding. We don't want to make the administrative burden so much that they don't want to apply, but we also have obligations that we are simply required to follow under federal uniform guidance. And so we will make sure that we are putting together programs that help address all of that, and hopefully, we'll be in really good shape again, no later than July 20th, we would have this portal up and running. As we go and we see what requests are coming to you through the commission meetings, again, you will approve every dollar that goes out. This is not something where staff would be asking to make any allocation lower than a certain amount or anything. And so you will have an idea on a week-by-week basis of how these funds are being used and applied for, what types of needs there are. And so as we go, the expectation is that if we need to make adjustments to the spending plan, based on what we're seeing, we'll flag that for you. We'll know what other things are maybe working through the process. And so this may be something that we're doing on a pretty routine basis through this item. So with that, now I will be quiet and ask for a motion to approve the spending plan.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz has a comment.
Thank you, Chairman. First, I just want to say fantastic job with getting all of this together. I'm sure that you spent many hours outside of normal business hours completing this with your team. So I really want to give you some props and say, great job. The second thing that I want to talk about, though, is I want to make sure everybody understands that this is just the buckets of money that we've allocated per program areas. And I just want to reiterate that, because there's no money that's actually been tied to, I mean, the money is there, but nobody has filled out an application, there's no money that's being directly sent to anyone yet. I've received a couple of calls, and I just want to make sure that I'm very clear with, you know, there's no real defined person that's going to receive this yet.
Right.
So that, again, though, what is the timeframe? I think I might have missed that, that people are going to have to apply. And it will be the same process as the solicitation of needs? So when will that go up?
So the latest the application site itself would be up is July 20th. That is the absolute latest. So the process for that is, an entity would submit an application, we would do a quick review of that entity itself to make sure that it is a valid entity. Obviously, we have all seen the articles about how rampant fraud is right now. And so we need to do our due diligence to ensure that that entity is a real entity. So once we have gone through that process, then we will actually move to the portion of the process where they are able to seek reimbursement for items they may have purchased, or we're setting up a separate process, depending on, you know, if they're trying to purchase an asset or something unusual, we would come to you all for preapproval for that, before we would allow them to move forward. And so once that process has occurred, once they've submitted that application for reimbursement, we, as a review team, as staff, would go through and look at it. We would use our consultant to assess the eligibility. That would then go to that Brent, or the team that Brent is chairing, the Federal Stenius Review Team. They would evaluate it within the context of this spending plan, knowing what the commission's priorities are, also in terms of the eligibility under CARES law. And then we would compile their recommendation to fund or not fund, and present that to the commission at a Wednesday meeting through, most likely, this agenda item. And so that would be the process. So it probably won't be super quick. I would say people can expect at least two weeks, just because of the two, the initial review team, and then also getting it on a commission agenda, would be if it's, if everything's going perfectly with that application, and we don't need any additional follow-up information.
Okay. So again, this is just a plan, and I'm okay with this plan, knowing that there's this $10 million in reserve, knowing that it's a flexible plan, you know, if we had to take money, I mean, if we're not going to spend all the money in one bucket, it could obviously go into another bucket.
Absolutely.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that we're all clear with that, and I will be supporting it today.
Okay. Thank you, Lindsay. And again, thank you for you and your staff. You've got a wonderful staff that does a lot of good work.
Thank you. They are amazing.
Thanks for letting us throw this in the middle of your budget process.
Who wants to be bored?
I know. So you always hear that the budget process is, takes so much time, and then we said, and by the way, throw this in there, too, so.
Well, the budget team has done the yeoman's work on this. They have done a fabulous job, too.
And thanks to Brent, thanks to the committee that's coming, and thanks to Whit O'Brien for their guidance. And I understand you're well ahead of maybe where the state is and other things, so that's good. So with that, we do need to take a formal motion to approve this document as of July 8th today, and so I will make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
There's a motion in a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay. Next item, Tom.
I am still up for a couple. I apologize.
That's okay.
But I will promise you to try and move quickly, if that makes you feel any better. So one of the things that we had promised you as we went through this process was to follow up with you and give you information on what needs are out there that we are unable to address. And so in front of you, you have a PowerPoint presentation that we've prepared that is pretty brief, that walks through what we learned from our different groups, not just within the county, but also from the notice of funding opportunities. So just quickly, a recap of what federal assistance has already happened. Beginning in March, early March, there was the Coronavirus Preparedness and Response Supplemental Appropriations Act. Then there was the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, a couple weeks later. Again, for us, the significance of that was that it provided two weeks of paid sick leave and 10 weeks of expanded FML for certain types of employees, not first responders, not healthcare workers, but it was able to provide some relief for those folks. It also then provided funding for a number of social service programs, so everything from children, child nutrition and WIC to aging services. It also was the initial discussion of unemployment insurance. Then, of course, the one we're most used to talking about is the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act, or the CARES Act. And what that put out was the Paycheck Protection Program. It was what provided those direct economic stimulus payments to individuals. It provided further relief for unemployment insurance, FEMA and JAG funding for public safety areas. It also gave money for transportation. We've seen in the news that the city of Wichita was able to receive from funding for that for transit. There is funding for economic development initiatives, also funding for elections, as we've discussed. Our own elections office here received some benefit from that. And then finally, what we have been talking about is what was included in Title V of CARES, and that was the Coronavirus Relief Fund. And that is how we received our 99.6 million. We also believe, of course, that we will receive another 9.3 million in state CARES funding from that Coronavirus Relief Fund, associated with the impact of high unemployment for our area. The state did receive a total of about $1 billion. And so that is funding that is being allocated through this round one that we've heard the most about, associated with the funding we're receiving. But they also have set up that task force that is working to direct round two and round three funding from their CARES allocation. Round two, right now, is what we're hearing is dedicated to economic revitalization, and they're still working through how that funding will be spent. We do know that there are only some uses of CRF funds that we have received. They have to be necessary COVID-19-related expenses incurred between March 1st and December 30th. They can't have been in the 2020 budget. And so that is our funding, but that is also the limitation, and it must flow downstream to anyone who would receive our funding. It is not intended to be a revenue replacement program. And as you'll see, that is where the crux of the issue comes into for our community.
And as you'll see, that is where the crux of the issue comes into for our community. Another item, though, is that the guidance does change frequently. You can see here the dates of the treasury guidance that's coming out, so it's keeping us on our toes. Again, we wouldn't want to be bored and we're definitely not. So our priorities, as we have worked through this process and we just talked about it with the spending plan, number one is testing. We know that that's how we know what's happening in our community with COVID-19. Number two, though, in a close second, is medical and emergency response planning and support. After that is staffing, to oversee all of these operations and to provide mental health crisis services. We know that that's certainly an issue in our community now. We also want to protect our first responders, healthcare workers and other employees, as well as those in our community. We want to safely provide services. And then, of course, as we just worked through the spending plan, we want to be able to provide aid to our other local governments for, and support for public health initiatives, support for vulnerable populations. We want to try and provide some support for mental health services, not just provided through com care. We want to provide that support to educational institutions and we want to try and support local businesses as we can. However, what you have seen and heard is that we simply, that we have $99.6 million of our own and another $9.3 million from the state, it's not enough to address all of the needs. And beyond that, the needs that are out there can't necessarily be addressed with this funding source. It's not necessarily legal. And so what we need to resolve through, from the government perspective, and this is where there may be some opportunities for the commissioners to have advocacy or think about task forces or steering teams, would be certainly what we heard about from the district attorney when we had your decision package workshop back in May. And that is that there is going to be a heavy impact to our judicial system, civil side and criminal side. And so we know that to address their long-term needs, they can't continue to do business as they have. They can't have big docket calls. They're probably going to need to have more judges to provide more service. That comes with more personnel and that comes with more space. At least that is what we have heard from them and hopefully you've had a chance to see their response to that organizational need. But of course, there's a downstream effect. To the extent that we don't have quick adjudications, that may mean that inmates sit in our jail longer. It could mean that the DA's workload goes up as those inmates stay or they're not able to get in front of the courts. We know, we just heard yesterday from Dr. Sedman with the Regional Forensic Science Center about the changing dynamics that they have. And of course, as we have increased cases and increased backlog, that's going to have a ripple effect on their work. And then finally, law enforcement. If there is, if there are folks maybe released out, or if they're not able to have the courts resolve things in a quick fashion, there may be increased workload for law enforcement. And I think we've seen that, too, in the last month and a half or two months with the crime in the community. So another need that we have heard about, of course, and I'm here to attest to personally, is the impact of constantly changing guidance and changing the rules as we go. And I am grateful, truly very grateful for the support that's coming into our community. But as we try and plan and work through all the federal rules that come with federal money, it makes it challenging. And so that has been a challenge and to the extent we can maybe slow that down or maybe add a little more flexibility about what those options are, that would be helpful. We do know that we are facing a situation with lost revenue going into the future. While the home market is great right now, what we're hearing is that there's just not that many homes on the market. And so that means that that could have long-term impact for our assessed valuation, particularly as that property value shifts to real property and residential property away from, you know, maybe commercial machinery and equipment. And so we expect to also see, especially when the federal unemployment program runs out, maybe some reduced amount of discretionary spending in our community. And we know that can be very real for us because we have very high unemployment in our community. And so we do expect hits on those areas, sales and use tax, motor vehicle taxes, that are heavily reliant on our economic activity. We also know that there have been significant administrative burdens that have come in with these laws. The five-year record retention, the FFs, the Family First Leave, those are things where we've been able to get additional positions and additional support, but that still creates quite a bit of administrative burden and backlog on the staff behind the scenes who are creating those records. We also know that there has been some challenges with our county processes. We're not necessarily built to do work remotely. And so one of the requests from our county departments has been to maybe increase the flexibility that we implement in terms of following our own processes and policies in these types of situations. And then finally, and probably the thing that will be a big topic of discussion for us as we go into next year, is the potential impact of state reductions to the budgets for things like com care and CDDO. We saw the governors propose reductions to keep the budget in balance. We saw that they're going to be funding reductions to certain agencies. We don't necessarily know how that looks, but based on history, we know that aid to local governments is typically something that we'll see reduction through that state term. We also know that in those areas, they already struggle to keep employees in the best of circumstances, and these are some fairly exceptional circumstances. And so there are some programs that are available to other types of entities in terms of maybe student loans or assistance with payroll that our entities are not able to get. And so trying to seek some relief for that is something that we have heard from departments. Looking then and shifting gears away from government and looking at what we heard through the notice of funding opportunity, and we're going to just kind of look at common themes, certainly this won't necessarily capture every need, but these are again focused at things where there could be an opportunity for advocacy from the commission to other legislative bodies. So within public health and social services, there's limited long-term relief in place for our smaller community-based clinics and not-for-profits. There's, of course, revenue loss because they weren't either able to stay open or because they've had to reduce their workload to keep everyone safe that's in the building. They have suffered significant revenue loss there from being able to bill. We also know that everyone's being hit by this. And so grants are less than they used to be, donations are less than they used to be, and so those entities are suffering. And then we have seen, and you'll see this as a common theme throughout, many of our local agencies here in our community benefited from the Paycheck Protection Program. But there is some concern about that program ending. There is some concern about what they'll do in the long term to stay afloat. They are concerned about that unemployment boost going away. But on the flip side, we did hear from some that that unemployment boost actually motivated some employees to want to stay in unemployed status because they were able to receive that additional $600 per week. And so that has actually created some challenges for some. So that's, that will be a balancing act, I think, certainly. So the possible advocacy for all of these is, you know, potentially additional relief at a federal level that's maybe targeted to different areas than have been targeted before, maybe extending the Paycheck Protection Program, but maybe doing it with modification, same thing with unemployment assurance. And then also through grant programs and things like that, potential restructuring of how those are offered and what the requirements are in order to be eligible. A common theme across education, of course, as you've already heard, it's not a new surprise, but there is a lack of infrastructure to provide remote learning. And so one of the things that has been proposed and talked about is trying to do this internet infrastructure investment. But CARES says basically things have to be in place by December 30th. For the most part, you can have those contracts in place and pay those contracts later. But certainly that's not enough time to go in and invest in getting a broadband section put up. And certainly that's also something that's been called out specifically in treasury guidance. And so potentially an investment from the federal government or state level to try and provide rural broadband or to boost internet capabilities or provide just additional educational funding and allow school districts or the state board of education to determine how those funds should best be used. Moving into the other needs category, I'm going to tackle this one from kind of the different types of responders. So we had museums, festivals and performance venues that responded. Many of them had the same type of experience and it's not surprising. They can't open or they have to open with reduced capacity and that means less revenue. And so certainly that is another area where we haven't necessarily seen any targeted funding for nonprofits or for those types of performance venues that are going to be impacted for quite a while under this. And then they also had the same concerns about the Paycheck Protection Program. To Commissioner O'Donnell's point earlier, we did hear quite a bit from businesses through this other needs assessment. Number one was the need for protective equipment and measures for staff and clientele. And of course, we're going to try and target some of that through our CARES funding. But again, I don't know what the needs are and how big that pot is and what additional measures may be necessary. And so that could either be some economic revitalization funding, maybe through the state level, or additional federal funding generally for public health response. Next is loss of revenue from the stay-at-home order plus the ongoing mitigation efforts. So that is a common theme we've all heard, missing revenue. And unfortunately, the CARES funds are unable to be used for that. And so maybe the expansion of an existing loan or grant program or new funding or a different type of business interruption grant program might be something to advocate for. And then finally, another theme we heard from businesses is that they don't have the infrastructure to do remote work or school successfully. Many of our businesses have kids in schools, so they had an impact from this. The next one is common themes across religious, charitable and cultural organizations, the same type of things that we've heard. They have a need for protective supplies for their membership or their communities, masks and gloves and hand sanitizer and things like that. There's a need for additional funding to continue programming. Again, that is varied. It is everything from just trying to keep their doors open, to pay their staff, to have just the basic commodities to operate their businesses, and also funding to try and do work remotely. And then finally, they also express concern about the Paycheck Protection Program. So as we look through all of these needs, it is clear that the needs are diverse and they're definitely real. There are many entities in this community with uncertain futures because they don't know what the next several months will look like, particularly as some of these programs that have come down from the federal government have, or are anticipated to expire. And we know that more help is needed. We simply don't have enough funding and the funding that is available isn't necessarily able to be used in the ways that would be most meaningful to some of these entities. So in terms of short-term advocacy, things that we think the commission could do now is basically reach out to representatives and encourage extension of current programs, even if that requires some modification to make them a better fit. Now that we have a little more data and know a little more about what's happening in our community, you could also approach the state Spark Task Force. Again, the state received about $1 billion in funding. And Cedric County represents about 17% of the state's population, but didn't receive 17% of the total allocation. And so there may be some opportunity to seek some additional relief for our community through the state. Long-term, we know and we've heard that our entire judicial system needs to change how it does its service to do so safely and to address the backlog that's been created through this process. And so certainly maybe a group to evaluate those options, maybe even across the state to try and resolve those issues and come up with a plan. We want to try and encourage maybe less administrative burden. Many of these things come with so many strings that it may be problematic for some of these entities to take on these allocations and these dollars because of what they'll have to do afterwards. Many of them aren't set up to receive federal money. And then finally, we know that there is a need for potentially additional stimulus funding, just dealing with the unemployment, the reopening, lost revenue and all of those impacts and/or potentially an economic development investment, maybe to try and spur new business to try and help address that. So that is the end of this presentation. And can I answer any questions?
Okay. Thank you. It sounds like we have some advocacy opportunities. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, just a few.
Okay. Thank you. I've taken some notes. This is good information. Thanks for prioritizing for us and pointing out all these needs that are not being able to address currently. So Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. There, July 9th, so tomorrow, the CARES Act Finance and Reporting Webinar will happen with the Spark Committee, so I just want to bring that to everybody's attention. I think we might have all received an email. I'm not sure if you did, but I've signed up for that, so I'll be attending that. But that's a great opportunity for advocacy. Thank you for your presentation.
No problem.
Do you know, are they going to take comments, public comments from, during that spark?
So I can maybe speak to that.
We were on the last webinar that the state did for this, and so you weren't necessarily able to speak, but they had an open chat where you were able to answer questions and they would try to respond to those as they went.
Okay. Well, the 17% population is a nice fact.
It equates to 225 million of the total allocation, if you want that additional interesting fact. But we received 99.6.
Okay. Well, thank you. I mean, those are, those are good data points, no question. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Being, oh, Mr. O'Donnell.
Yeah. No, thank you. I know it's getting kind of redundant, but thank you for all the work that you and your team are putting on. And I think the more they can hear our appreciation through the public and through you as well, but, but we don't, none of us take what you guys do lightly and realize this is, this is so important to the health of our community. And oftentimes, the finances aren't near as glamorous as, you know, what Adri might get to do, but, but really what you do, it's so critical. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll make sure to pass that along. Hopefully, they're all watching, too.
I understand this is a receive and file document, so I make a motion to receive and file the opportunity for advocacy for unaddressed needs in Cedric County.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks again, Lindsay. Next up, is it still you?
This is my last one, I promise you. I'm running out of voice, so I'm going to keep it short. And I know that's going to make Mike Papoun happy. So the COVID spending status through yesterday was a total of $3,872,950. Overall, that's an increase of about $500,000 from last week, the bulk of which is actually for about 1 million disposable masks that we put in an order for. That alone was worth about $300,000. Additional increases in that time have included gloves, $32,000 just for those, another $20,000 for cleaning services and $20,000 for technology associated with standing up temporary space for the health department. So that includes their box site where they are housing some of their temporary office staff, as well as some work that's already been initiated to try and get the armory ready to go for them here in a week or so.
How much did you say?
For the technology?
Yeah.
$20,000. So that will go up, don't worry. That's just what it's been since last week.
Because on the sheet, last week it was $15,000.
So, so this is just the increase from last week to this week was $20,000. Overall, for technology, we have spent $60,000.
Okay.
And so that's, I think what you heard for the armory was the $15,000.
Right.
But then there's the $5,000 for that additional, what they're calling the box site, where they have, where they're housing their administrative team. And so...
But in total, it's going to be $60,000? Is that what you just said?
No. In total, the, I'm sorry, I wasn't understanding your question. It took me a minute to catch up to you. So the total $60,000 is on technology purchase across the county.
Okay.
That's not just for the health department. That would be for the remote technology, remote work technology. So I apologize.
No, I need to apologize. Thank you.
So we have not had any increases in our Family First paid leave, although we will by the end of day today because payroll is posting. So we'll have some new numbers for that next time. We have only had a minimal increase within elections, about $1,000 of spending from last week to this week, and that was for some maintenance service on a printer that they had purchased. And so what that means is that we continue to have a significant amount of funds remaining, And so as we move forward, now that you've adopted this spending plan, we'll try and allocate those different buckets to try and give you running updates on where we stand, particularly from the government side of things. And you did hear last week with the Regional Forensic Science Center request, the very first step in our new process of what we bring to you all to approve versus... first step in our new process of what we bring to you all to approve versus notify. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any additional information. Otherwise, this is also something I would recommend you receive and file, and then I'll go away.
Okay, we recommend that we receive and file, and you go away. Is that part of the motion?
Sure.
Okay.
Why not?
We'll just keep it receive and file. Thank you, Lindsey. So my motion to receive and file, please. Okay. Been a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meister.
Aye. Lindsey, you've been thanked before, but we do appreciate it very much. Thank you. Okay, next up, Mr. Stamper.
Mr. Chairman, if I could right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd request, we really didn't make any notation in the agenda for this week, and the resolution would be, we'd be asking you to adopt a resolution. So I'd ask that you, I'd request an off-agenda item from the Board of County Commissioners to consider a resolution relating to CARES funding from the state of Kansas.
Okay, this is the, make a motion to do an off-agenda item regarding acceptance of funds from the state of Kansas Coronavirus Relief Fund. Been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meister.
Aye. Okay, now, this is the infamous 9-point-whatever-million.
That's correct.
Okay.
Kevin Stamper, Assistant County Counselor. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The federal government came along and instructed all states to basically distribute 45% of their CARES allocation. In the state of Kansas, that was $1.02 billion. So the governor created the Spark Task Force, the Strengthening People and Revitalizing Kansas Task Force. They've had a couple of meetings so far, and they've also had a steering committee that's been meeting relatively regularly. And then back on June 2nd, they came along and determined that there was going to be a substantial allocation of additional CARES money, not the entire 45%, all in one lump. But they determined that they were going to use two different criteria in order to distribute the money in this initial allocation. The first criteria was population, and out of that, Sedgwick County is not going to be receiving any allocation because we've already received a direct allotment from the federal government in our CARES money. The second was addressing coronavirus cases and high unemployment resulting therefrom. And Sedgwick County has the highest unemployment rate in the state. So using their augmented formula, the determination was made that Sedgwick County would be getting $9,298,991 in order to address those problems. There were some requirements that we had to go through in order to receive that allocation, however, and it was on, I believe, July the 16th, or June the 16th, rather, that the requirement started to take shape, one of which is that we pass a resolution that's kind of a fill-in-the-blank type of thing, and you must pass it as is. The problem that we were having, or at least the concern that we were encountering with that, is that Johnson County and Sedgwick County received direct allocations, and there was some concern that perhaps the state was trying improperly to guide or in some other way direct our use of the $99 million. So Johnson County and Sedgwick County, we had a meeting of the legal, finance, and management teams and have discussed those concerns. We're on the same page as far as that goes. We were allowed to insert whereas clauses, and we have done so in the resolution, but we aren't allowed to change anything after the whereas clauses. We have made it clear that we are going to follow the federal guidance in terms of how we distribute our $99 million that Sedgwick County received through the CARES allocation. But other than that, we are required to pass this resolution and submit it to the state no later than 13th of July in order to receive our allocation from them on the 15th, when they start distributing funds. So we're presenting you with the resolution today and would ask that you take a vote on that. And I'd stand for any questions.
All right. Kevin, I appreciate it. I know that you've been working with Johnson, so we're both on the same, similar pages, so we're not in conflict with each other.
Right.
That would confuse the Spark or the state.
Right. Spoke with Larry McCauley yesterday about this.
That's wonderful. The other part is just quickly glancing. I see like number two is what's examples of allowed, number three is not allowed, and then there's some other stuff in here, quickly glancing.
And those track along with the federal guidance.
Okay.
So as far as the parts of the resolution that we can't change, some of them we wouldn't want to anyway because they all track along with federal acceptable allowances for spending and limitations.
Okay, so this resolution has the 9 million, and anything we still could possibly be eligible with Spark depending on?
Yes. This is just the initial.
Right.
Allocation that will be made out of that. I believe it was 400 and something or other million dollars that they were taking care of in this round, which still leaves them a substantial portion of those funds that are going to be rolled out in a couple of other phases after this.
Okay.
But this was just the initial push to follow the federal guidance for states that they get out 45% of the funds that were allocated.
Thank you. You're a wealth of knowledge on this. I appreciate it very much. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. So number two, it talks about the bullet that says grants to small businesses to reimburse the cost of business interruption caused by required closures. Is that, would that money only be allocated during the closure or just subsequent issues relating to it outside of the timeframe?
It would be allocated in the way that we put forth in the spending plan that you've already received. So this is going to be dealing with business interruption issues, unemployment issues, and that sort of thing. And I'd defer to Lindsey for a more detailed explanation on that.
Well, the conversation that we had last week, Lindsey, was those business interruption dollars could only be, they could only be allocated during the time of the closure.
So Lindsey Povisso, CFO, yes, the, so the business interruption grants themselves are only able to assist businesses for when there was a mandated closure. And so it's not necessarily that we could only allocate during that time, but the issue would be trying to determine a way to do that without, you know, picking people to receive the bulk of that funding. And so because we had such a short time of mandated closure, and because we don't necessarily have a comprehensive list of who was closed and who wasn't as an essential versus a non-essential business, we aren't able to determine a fair way to allocate that funding in a way that would actually have a significant impact because there are so many potential businesses in Sedgwick County that could be eligible. And because it was for such a short time, the funding just simply wouldn't be significant. So that's why I think through part of that advocacy action, we recognize that there is a need. But this funding isn't necessarily intended to do the revenue replacement that went on for much longer and is still going on much longer than just that mandated closure portion, if that helps.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Mr. Chairman, Lindsey, I have a question for you as well. Sorry. Looking at page three of the resolution down at the bottom in subitem I there, talks about we have to do two things. We have to have the money appropriated by August 15th and receipts in our possession by the end of the year. So the items that we're covering in this are very similar to items in the CARES fund, but they're not, it's not exactly the same. It's a little bit, I'd say, very, very close. So with that in mind, does the CARES fund have the, does the CARES fund doesn't have the August 15th caveat, does it not?
No, it does not. So this is a state's requirement associated with their round one funding. They are expecting every county to respond back to them with a plan for how to allocate that funding by August 15th for review. And then, once they approve it, then my understanding is those funds can be allocated. And so they're anticipating that everyone will adopt this resolution by July 13th. They will distribute the funds July 15th, and there needs to be a plan for how those will be spent, submitted to the state by August 15th. And then we have to basically account for how those dollars are used because what the state is hoping to do is to take any funding that's not dispersed or used or allocated or planned for in this part of the process and put that into their round three funding. And so I also might ask Kevin to speak to the whereas clause that he added that is attempting to try and say that this resolution, as it applies, applies only to the 9.3 million allocation that we're receiving, as opposed to trying to apply to our entire allocation.
Before you step away, just a question. And since some of this stuff is similar between the two different pots of money, I assume that we need to basically prioritize the spending of this money even over the 99, actually over the CARES funds, so that we have this money is essentially earmarked, if you will, early. Second of all, this money doesn't have to be based on actual expenses or receipts at this time. It can basically be a perspective, if you will, to the business.
Right. And basically, that's what you all just approved in that spending plan, was that 9.3 million for economic revitalization. That's essentially what we need to turn into the state to say, this is how we plan to use these funds. And so in my mind, that has been accomplished by what you approved earlier today.
And does this go through the same approval process through the Wood O'Briens and?
So we will use them for that, certainly, to help us determine how to allocate and how to spend and how to account for appropriately and document. But in terms of the planning itself, it's, this plan is not as simple as just coming to you all and getting a plan approved. That was step one in the process for this 9.3 million. Step two, of course, is getting this resolution passed and up to the state. And then step three requires us to submit a plan up to the state by August 15th and get their approval for it as well.
And so in order to account for this, because they are similar types of expenditures appropriations, but it's different pots of money, you have to probably keep a separate fund number or have you keep track of those things, another set of books, if you will, to keep track of this money specifically. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes. So we will, we will put it all in the stimulus fund, but most likely what will happen is we'll create a separate program code within there so that we can account for this receipt of funding and then how we actually spend this specific allocation.
Thank you for the answers, and if Kevin wants to respond as well, that's mine.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't have anything to add to what Lindsey said. She did ask me to explain the whereas clause. After consulting with Johnson County and then among Tom Lindsey and Mike, we decided to insert a final whereas clause on page two that indicates that we've already received our direct allocation from the United States Treasury. There are specific guidelines that we're required to follow in terms of the use of that money and the reporting requirements and so on and so forth. We went ahead and acknowledged the fact that we're going to be receiving basically about a tenth of the money from the state that we receive from the federal government. And since we're going to be distributing that on the same basis, using the same rules, we just indicated that the two separate funds would be used separately but using the same guidelines, and that we're not recognizing that there are any strings attached to the use, other than the ones the state would impose on their $9 million.
Thank you.
Okay. Kevin, and so did you say at the beginning, so we could add some whereas's, but basically after that, we're kind of locked in?
Yes, sir.
In this duplicate?
It was a fill-in-the-blank document that says, insert statute here, or insert county here, or insert amount of allocation. And the Spark Board was really clear, and then that position was endorsed when the State Finance Council actually issued authorization for the Spark guidance.
Okay.
That were tied up after the whereas clauses.
All right. Well, I'm ready to make a motion to approve this. I just, I did note, quick, we're all doing a quick glance, top of page five, the last page, A, does reaffirm what Lindsey told us before, that the school districts need to be in the county where their headquarters are at.
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you. All right. Any other questions? Being done, I make a motion on this off-agenda item to accept the funds from the state of Kansas Coronavirus Relief Fund document.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meister.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we are, one more, we're back from the off-agenda item, so now we're at?
Morning Commissioners. Tim Kaufman, Deputy County Manager.
Just, hold on, just to mention, we're still on item E, sir, on the agenda.
Still on item E or D?
On E. Still on item E.
Okay. All right. Well, that's right. Yeah, sorry. Yes, we're still on item E.
We're still on item E. I have a request. I mentioned yesterday as we talked, and earlier today, I think one of you acknowledged that things are changing daily and sometimes even hourly. We've seen a pretty dramatic change in the infection rate in our community, and that has increased the need for additional staff positions to address contact tracing, disease investigation, and then communications with individuals about that. And so what I would like to present to you is a subset, actually, of the item that Lindsey presented that authorized, I think, $25 million for testing and contact tracing. And so embedded within that $25 million expenditure, I'm here to ask for the authority to create up to 115 positions. And I know that sounds like a lot, and we've talked a little bit about the struggles that we've had to fill some of our positions. And so the approach that we'll take is that we will, we've identified 115 different functions that we need done. We will try and fill those internally, and we will be making quick decisions if we struggle to fill them internally, to go to staffing firms to add additional folks to do the work. And then the other thing to keep in mind is that, I think I mentioned yesterday, we're also exploring a lot of different technology opportunities, both on the front end and the back end of the testing and tracing process. And so as we identify technology solutions that will help replace some of the manual or in-person functions, the need for some of these positions go down. I don't anticipate that we will ever actually have 115 additional people on at the same time unless things go really well. And one of the things that we've discovered so far is that things aren't going all that well in certain areas, and staffing has been one of our biggest challenges. And so we know that we need this many people. I don't know that we'll be able to hire them all. Some of them we will add through staffing services, temporary firms, and then hopefully some of these functions will be replaced by technology as we move forward. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. Forty-six positions are disease investigators, 45 positions are support staff positions that will do either upfront work or back-end work, calling, those sorts of things. Some additional medical assistant staff to help with increased testing, and then a couple of administrative functions. When we add that many positions, we've got to add some supervisory support as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but the request is to allow the authorization up to 115 positions.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. Are these temporary positions?
Yes, we would time these.
Can you just speak to the kind of position, like full-time status?
Sure.
Benefits, those kinds of things?
Yes. The intent is that we would hire folks on a full-time basis with benefits through the end of the year, through the duration of the CARES funding, and then we'll, and we'll see what circumstances we're facing at the end of the year as far as funding goes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I support this. We've seen that we definitely need the additional personnel in order to be able to handle the workload. One other thing that you sent us was about the possibility of getting some testing machines in the near future. Don't we need, if you're going to do that, don't we need to set aside some money really quickly so that if something comes up that you can react? Or are we going to wait for a week or so before that we can react to something like that?
I'll defer to Lindsey on that.
Hi, Commissioners. Again, I promised to leave, and then I didn't. So the testing, the 25 million for that testing, now that it's been authorized, that would be available to be used. would be available to be used by the Health Department to purchase whatever machines they needed. And then based on the criteria that we've put out for the process that we would follow, depending on the dollar amount of what we're purchasing, we would bring that purchase to the commission to approve, but the funding is there and has been allocated as a part of that spending plan, if that is part of the overall testing strategy that the commission approves.
I understand we got the bucket of money sitting there. What I'm saying is, do we need the flexibility? So we've got to get testing going even more. So do you need the flexibility now for us to say, go out and if we find a great machine that all of our experts say is what we can do, that we'll give you the flexibility to start buying that?
I, I'm not sure that I can answer the flexibility question. I will tell you that we do have a team. We're utilizing some of the faculty at KU School of Med to help us sort through the various machines. I think we'll have a decision fairly closely, fairly quickly. So from what I understand from Lindsay, we'd be able to make that, get, initiate that purchase process.
So if you get something between now and next week, you don't need it. My concern is that testing is our highest priority, and we need to give you the flexibility to get job done that we're giving you. We don't want to tie your hands, so if you need a million dollars, I don't know what you need, or if you need it, if you can wait until next Wednesday. I just don't want to delay something just because we don't have a meeting.
Commissioners, you've given me the authority to make emergency purchases several weeks ago. I will tell you, and we'll do that, just like the mass this week, the half a million times two order. We made that decision. We informed you of it today. We'll move as quickly as we can on this. When we talk about hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars, I would, you have all given me also the flexibility to call a special meeting. If this kind of thing crops up, I don't know, we have to wait till a Wednesday. I inform you, we can WebX you, and if we have to, we have a public discussion about it, we'll spend. We will move as fast as we can and as carefully as we can, and I know you have all given me the flexibility to do what I have to do, and you have also told me that you are willing to have a special meeting at 10 o'clock at night, if that's what we need to do for what's best for the county. So we will exercise that authority as we move forward on this. While I'm discussing here, the only other thing I want to talk about as far as track tracing and some of the challenges that Adrian's crew has faced with this, with the testing component of this, we are looking for a technological solution to facilitate this process. It is, there are a number of products, because everybody in the country is facing the same thing. There are more and more products every day coming out, software products that allow for efficiency in front end and back end, reporting back to people. We are diligently looking at those. We are probably realistically several weeks out from being able to adopt one, and that is why Tim is coming in today with the people request. But specifically, if we have a hard time hiring this amount of people, the technology solution to me is the long-term on this. And when I say long-term, two or three months out from now. So we will continue to aggressively pursue that type of approach. And I know Tim mentioned it yesterday, I just wanted to reiterate it today, so.
Very good. Well, I appreciate it. I know we keep getting feedback on how long it takes for us to be able to provide the test results back to folks, and anything that we can do to help speed that up, I'm ready to do it. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Back to the machine, buying a machine, you have to have the reagents too, so I mean, that's a real factor in buying a machine. And, you know, with the national supply, will, will we have better luck? I mean, because we're not currently buying any of this, so we would be a new person into the supply chain, right? I mean, how, is that the best strategy for us to buy a machine? Or would it be that we would work with a lab? I mean, is that possible? Do you guys see where I'm going with this question?
I think that one of the factors that we'll consider as we choose, as we choose a device, an instrument, would be availability of reagents and that sort of thing. That'll be part of the decision-making process. But we also need to do what you're talking about in terms of adding additional lab capacity, make sure that we, we have to do a combination of different things. We need to do some of the testing ourselves. We're confident that we need to have testing capability within our own four walls to be able to do some of that. We also will continue to have to rely on national labs, local labs, labs within the state. So we're continuing to explore different relationships with different labs as well. There's not a single solution that will solve this testing issue. We've got to have a multi-promed approach to this.
So who currently is using an automated system? So if I call and I'm in the queue, I have, I can tell when I received a test, when I could expect a callback, or when my test results will be uploaded. I mean, if, obviously, if we're going to look into it, it's got to be out there. What would take us so long to get that?
One of the, we have to figure out what's the right one for us. What we're talking about is the need for an electronic medical record, an electronic health record, and they come in all sizes, shapes, and flavors, and we need to identify one that will ideally work for us in the immediate for scheduling, lab results, and then some kind of a patient portal. Those are the three key elements that we need. And then hopefully, we'll be able to find something that has modules that will help the rest of the Health Department function, because while much of the Health Department's efforts are focused right now on COVID-19, we've still got a lot of other functions that are going on every day. And so we've got to sort through the different EHRs that are available and find one that we can get implemented quickly. And so that's probably going to be something cloud-based, and so there are security issues that we need to resolve. So we're going to work with both our IT staff and then folks from maybe even Whitaker Brian, but certainly the folks at KU as well, to help us identify the right solution there.
Thank you.
Okay. So we, the motion is for 115 physicians to be added. Okay. I'll make that motion for 115 physicians to be added to support the COVID...
Second.
There's a motion. A second, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I have two questions. Number one, do you know where these folks are going to be able to find office space, or how's that going to work?
We are scrambling right now to identify space that is within the county system that we can convert, and we're also contemplating whether or not we need to work with Tanya and her staff to help us identify additional office space elsewhere. So we're working on that right now.
And I assume that they'll need computing assets, computers and that type of thing?
Yes, we're looking at that as well.
Okay. And then, do we have an estimate with this? Again, I totally support the motion, and I think this is a good idea. I would like to know what we're estimating in terms of costs.
Cost for these 115 positions works out to about $3.5 million.
And on top of that, office space and computing assets, probably talking $5 million probably in that ballpark?
Four and a half to five would be my guess, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. I might mention that the reason we want to be in the county footprint is because of capability for connectivity. We go with an outside office space, then we have to wire in. So we're looking, as Tim mentioned, at a number of options within the county footprint to temporarily set people, which will help reduce that cost to some degree.
Okay. There's been a motion in a second. Any other comments being done? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
All right. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Any other? Okay.
Still on the item. Echo, sir?
Yes. All right.
All right. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. During yesterday's staff meeting, we discussed the public awareness campaign and outreach implementation plan for Cedric County, and I indicated at that time I'd be here today with a request for additional funding to continue our public awareness campaign for at least another eight weeks. Again, for some background, we are currently running an eight-week public awareness campaign utilizing outdoor billboards, radio spots. We're working with consultants, Christina Long with CML Collective, and Claudia Amaro with A, B, and C Bilingual Resources, to assist us with representing the African-American community and Hispanic and Latino community, as well as Tammy Bradley with Bothner and As I heard yesterday, it's important that we continue to maintain public awareness of safe practices as we move through this pandemic and we maintain our messaging. My request today is for an additional $100,000 to look at providing additional various media platforms and outreach, and so that will include TV spots and digital billboards. I spoke with Cott Media yesterday, who is our media buyer, and she believes that we can alternate the coverage for both TV spots and digital billboards, which will make that media coverage for 16 weeks. And we have some really creative ideas that are swirling that we'd like to explore on how to engage the entire community, as well as some community members, to assist in this public awareness campaign. We also want to continue to work with the Vietnamese community to make sure that we have them engaged, as well as make sure our messages are being accessible to both those with hearing and visual impairments. Also mentioned yesterday, we want to market the availability of masks. So again, I'd just like to request $100,000. As Lindsay mentioned, it is included in our spending plan, so my request is to spend that allocation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? I don't see any. Motion to approve up to $100,000 for continued communications.
Second.
And a motion in a second. Any other questions being done? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
All right. Motion carries. Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on July 2nd, 2020.
Morning, Joe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on July 2nd has two items that we're requesting your approval for. Our first item is the inmate clothing, linens, and toiletries for the Sheriff's Office, Department of Corrections. This recommendation is to accept the proposals from both Bob Barker Company Incorporated and Victory Supply LLC, and this will be to establish a contract period of two years with three one-year options to renew. Our final item is the cloud solutions for various departments, and this recommendation is to utilize the state of Kansas Cloud Solutions NASPO contracts, and that's with Karasov Technology Corporation and Sirius Computer Solutions Incorporated. And these two contracts are good through November 15th, 2026. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of both items.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Are there any questions? I don't see any questions. We entertain a motion to...
Move to approve bids and contracts.
Okay. A motion?
Second.
In a second. Being no other comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Be that. Thank you, Joe. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Morning again, Commissioners. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items G through K this morning.
Okay. There's a recommendation. I make a motion to approve items G through K on the consent agenda.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any other questions or comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Other.
Does any of the Commissioners have anything on the other to comment on? I don't see any, so Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Executive Session.
Commissioner Cruz?
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 20 minutes until 11:05 a.m. for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel relating to employment of a management-level county employee, and that the Board of County Commissioners returns to this room from executive session at 11:05 a.m.
I'll second that. And a motion in a second to go into executive session. Don't see any other questions or comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
And we will do that in this room.
Let's just stay in this room.
So we need the, confirm the media will be turned off, and we'll vacate the room. room. We have returned from executive session. No action was taken. And, uh, Mr. Papoon?
I think we're ready for a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna make a motion and then allow each of the Commissioners to make a statement, after we second and vote. So I move that we retain Tom Stoltz as County Manager for a period beginning September 1, 2020, and ending on August 31, 2022 pursuant to the employment agreement between the manager and Sedgwick County dated February 20, 2019. That's my motion.
Second.
And a second. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Tom, I just want to, uh, I can't, I can't thank you enough for the work that you and the staff, what you've done, bring professionalism to the, to the county and the staff, and especially then this curveball we've been throwing at in the year 2020 has not been one that has been easy. And your calmness and directions has been well appreciated, and I can't thank you enough. And Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom came on at a time when we were having a number of difficult periods here in the county, and I think staff morale was low. We had some conflict on the bench at that point in time, and the atmosphere in the county changed overnight. Our staff, I believe, respects Tom greatly. The things that are happening, that happened immediately after that, were extremely positive. And now we're in a different situation. We're in a pandemic, and it requires our entire staff to be working together every day. And our staff, under Tom's leadership, is doing fantastic work. I'm so proud of everything that's going on right now in the county with our staff. You can't believe how many hours the public just doesn't see what's going on every day with, with Tom and everyone that, that reports to him. So I'm very proud that we are continuing this relationship. One of my biggest worries, honestly, is that we're working Tom into the dirt, and his staff on top of that. So adding these positions that we did during the meeting today and finding some way that we can provide some relief to Tom and his staff are still things that we have to work on. But thank you very much for what you do for our county. Thanks for your leadership throughout the years. We appreciate it.
Yes. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Tom, I just really appreciate how frequently you get back to me, nights and weekends. I want you to thank your wife for all of the time that you're spending away from your family to help this county move forward. This past year and a half that I've been a Commissioner, I have, I've felt respected. I felt like you treat me like an equal, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So nine years ago, when I was new on the Wichita City Council, I met Tom, and I thought his name was actually DC, because everybody kept calling him DC as Deputy Chief, but I thought it was initials for something. So I meet this guy, DC Stoltz. He, he comes to my office, and I immediately connected with him, thought he was an incredible guy. We end up appointing him to run the MABCD with this merge department. He knocked it out of the park. When I was elected County Commissioner four years ago, I had the opportunity to work with him again, and I remember I had a conversation with Dave Under right after I was elected. And Dave Under said, "Before I leave, I need Tom Stoltz to be the County Manager." And it hit me about the legacy that Dave Under had and his discernment. And I was on KMUW yesterday, and they said, "What's the best thing that you've done in the last four years, and why do you deserve reelection to the Sedgwick County Commission?" And I said, "It was hiring Tom Stoltz as County Manager." And I said, "It's not just because of me. I have truly residents in my district that work for the county that have come up to me, pre-COVID shook my hand, post-COVID given me high fives or fist bumps, saying, 'Thank you so much for Tom Stoltz being the County Manager. It's changed the entire environment at Sedgwick County. It makes me happy to be here. I'm proud of what we do because of the leadership that Tom Stoltz brings to our community.'" I know that respect that carries to our federal delegation, our state delegation, and all the cities in Sedgwick County appreciate Tom and his leadership. I know Bob Leighton at the city of Wichita has not just a friend, but also a confidant in Tom, and I think all of us Commissioners are able to do our jobs better because of the team that Tom Stoltz puts in place. So if I've done anything over the last four years, hiring Tom Stoltz has been the best thing that I've done. So thank you, Tom. You're, you're like family.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would be remiss if I didn't echo some of the comments of my colleagues. I do think that County Manager, I think, is the hardest job in Sedgwick County, and I think you're doing a great job, and I appreciate the way that you, the way that you respect everyone and you build relationships. And I just think that it's, uh, working for five unique and strong personalities has got to be extremely challenging, but you do a great job, and I'll say thank you. I, I've been here the longest as of right now, and I just want to say I've worked with three County Managers, and I respect the difficulty that, what you're dealing with. And I just wanted to let you know, I greatly do appreciate what you're doing and doing a tremendous job. Thank you.
Tom? Anyway, there was one part of the motion, I said, also included that you don't have a chance to refuse this offer. You get to accept it, so, but thank you if you got to say anything, but- But thank you if you got to say anything, but...
Thank you all. Now, I just appreciate your confidence in the past and in the future, and I did clear this with my wife before I...
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, Sedgwick County and our community and our county government is a better place because of Tom Stoltz. We are in a better place.
And the staff. Chairman, thank you very much. I've got a great leadership team set around me, so...
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Madam Clerk, there is no other business. So with that, we stand adjourned. Everybody have a good week.